Good evening, the hour being after six forty-five, I'd like to call the March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three School Committee Meeting to order. The first business is the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, the next order of business is the Walpole High School Student Report, and we have Colin Mahoney tonight.
Good evening, I am Colin Mahoney, and I'm a junior at Walpole High School. Right now at the high school, students just selected their classes for next year, and term three is coming to an end on April third. This week at the high school is Inclusion and Acceptance Week, and on Tuesday this week, the Student Council and the Red Cross Club hosted a blood drive. And a couple of weeks ago, the Best Buddies hosted a bowling night at Ryan Family Amusements. Winter sports were extremely eventful, with boys hockey and basketball going far, as well as girls' basketball, which moved on and went to the semifinals. Spring sports started practicing this Monday, and are off to a great start. The Film Festival at the high school will also be hosting an electronics drive on April fifteenth, from nine to two. Speaking of the Film Festival, dates are out with the two showings, one on May eleventh and one a week later on the eighteenth. The one on the eighteenth is the red carpet night. This weekend, some speech and debate students will be competing in debate states. Students at the high school will also be participating in the MCAS next Wednesday. The high school also hosted the SAT on March eleventh, in which many Walpole High students took the SAT. They will all receive their results tomorrow. That's all for this evening, thank you and have a good night.
Thanks Colin, any questions or comments?
Thanks Colin.
Thank you very much, I know that you're probably pretty busy as a junior, so you're welcome to go if you need to.
Thank you.
All right, our next order of business is an update on the Thailand trip.
Sure, so we have Walpole High School teachers, but we'll also let our students go up, right, Olivia and Danica. They're here to present, to provide us with an update on their recent trip.
Um, all right, so I'm Danica, I'm a senior at the high school.
I'm Liv, and I'm a junior.
Um, I found out about the trip when I was nominated by Ms. Wick, my biology teacher, last year. Um, I was nominated, and I believe it was around February of last year, so I've been thinking about the trip since then, and it doesn't really feel like I've already gone and come home and adjusted back to my regular schedule. Um, yeah, so it's just weird not thinking about getting ready to go anymore. But yeah, I've been, that's been on my mind for a long time. Um, and I debated going up until probably fall of this year, because no one I was really friends with was going. Um, I had never gone out of the country before, and, I mean, it was obviously a big decision going to the other side of the world, like with no one I really was close with, um, but I'm really glad I went. Um, do you wanna?
Yeah, I found out about the trip around October, so I decided to sign up, and same as Danica, I didn't really have many friends who were going, and I had also never been out of the country before, but I'm very glad I went for the experience, and same as her, I looked forward to it for so long and prepared for so long, but it doesn't feel real, we're already back.
Um, all right, so if you look up at the board, um, that's the group of us who went. It was twenty-two students and four teachers. They, it was the Science Department at Walpole High who brought us. Um, they were our four chaperones. And then we had a tour guide, her name is Jing. Um, she met us right from the point, we got off the airport in Bangkok to, and was with us the entire trip until we left. Um, she has hoses and, or she has homes in two parts of Thailand. She's fluent in English, and she did all the translating for us, and, um, yeah. Do you wanna do this one?
So Jing also made sure that we got a lot of experiences outside of our community service work, and we got to go to places like you see here. We walked around a museum, we went to markets, and we even got to go to orchard farms, butterfly gardens, see a bunch of really pretty nature.
Yeah, I'd never really seen anything like, it, it's just like a different world there. It was so different seeing something like, their like culture there and stuff, so. Um, these are more pictures, we went on these things on, I believe it was like our second day in Bangkok, and they were called tuk-tuks, and that's like their main form of transportation there. Um, and they're kind of like taxis, but they're pulled by like a motorcycle, and they're just everywhere there. Um, so those were really fun, that was probably one of my favorite parts. Um, and then in the bottom left is a picture of me with three of the teachers, and we dressed up in some traditional Thai clothing at one of the museums we went to.
So we stayed at two different hotels and the Education Center, and everyone there was so kind, we had amazing experiences. Everyone was so welcoming, and was just really excited to learn what we were doing there and our experience. Um, especially at the Educational Center, they had home-cooked meals there every day, and variety of different foods. They were so kind, everyone taught us so much.
Yeah, I thought, so we stayed at, we basically went through, we stayed at a hotel, we flew to Chiang Mai, stayed at another hotel, and then that was when we went to the Educational Center. And then we backtracked on our halfway through the trip, we went back to that hotel and then back to the other hotel in Bangkok. Um, but the Educational Center was like a totally different experience for me, it was so different than the hotels. It basically felt like I was at summer camp, and I hated camp when I was little. And I was like miserable at first, but then I ended up just loving it, because I'd never like experienced anything like that, like it was like set times, we had to go get food, they had like archery, rock climbing, and it ended up, it was like, it felt like I was kind of back home in a way. Um, yeah, so that was really cool to do something like that, and I feel like now I missed out on like camp stuff when I was little.
So this was the Elephant Poopoo Paper Park, which is where they make paper out of elephant poop, and we got to learn how it was made, we even got to make our own papers. You can see there, it was dyed pink, and we even had the chance to make arts and crafts out of the paper that was already made there.
Yeah, that was really cool. The elephants are herbivores, so they only eat like plants, so you're actually able to like take their poo and like turn it into things, and so that organization recycles it to sell things.
So this was our community service that we did at the school, and we got to work with the kids, which I thought was really cool, because I wasn't expecting to be able to interact with them as much as we did. Um, they didn't speak English, but we really got to, like, they really bonded with us, I feel, and it was very nice to feel like we were doing something good for them, and helping out at the school.
Yeah, so what we did there, we started off our first day by, um, preparing mushroom seed soil to, because the school has a very poor lunch program, so we ended up, by the second day, bagging eight hundred bags of mushroom soil that they're gonna plant within the next couple months, so that they can grow their own mushrooms, and they're gonna try and sell them, and they're als, it also like just provides something healthy for them to eat at the school. Um, there were only like two or three teachers I noticed there with around fifty kids. Um, there was three-year-olds, and there was even a seventeen-year-old, and they're all just like mixed in together, it's just a super poor community, so it was so good to like just try and like help them the best we could, in only the two days we could. Um, we also, um, helped them make vegetable beds behind the school, so we made eight of those. And then we planted, um, twenty guava and lime trees, so that they can grow them. Um, and there were a lot of like locals there too, who were like older adults that, it was hard to communicate with them, because they didn't speak any English, but we just found ways to, just from showing each other what we were trying to do. Um, and then by the end of the, I didn't have a lot of time to like interact with the kids, because we were really busy, but by the end of it, like, I remember a little girl just coming up to me and hugging me when we had to leave, and it like just made such a difference, and like realizing how much it meant to them to help them and hang out with us. Um, we had time, a little time, to like play with them, and we did, we taught them, or we, someone brought a frisbee, and we were playing frisbee with them. Um, we, they taught us how to play like a kind of volleyball game. Um, yeah, it was just really cool to remember helping them.
So we also got to go to an elephant sanctuary, where we did some more community service there. Um, we were able to make vitamin balls for the elephants, and we got to hand-mix all this stuff together for momentum balls, and it was really cool. We got to learn a lot about the elephants themselves, and we even got to go on a hike where the elephants were walking right by us, which was incredible.
We also, um, on our first day there, we cut up sugarcane, and we got to try it ourselves, and I'd never had it before, but it was really cool to, um, do that. We like cut them, cut up huge sticks of sugarcane with machetes, that we, and then we ended up filling the elephants' feeders and watching them eat, but it was so cool to just be so like close to them. I'll never get to do any, or have that experience again, probably.
So we got to try a lot of different food while we were there. Um, on our first full day, full day there, I believe, we got to decide if we wanted to go to the market and get street food, or if we wanted to go to a restaurant that was across the street from our hotel. So Danica and I both went to the restaurant across with our tour guide Jing, and she helped us figure out what we would like and what kind of food we wanted that night. Uh, there was a lot of rice served with every meal, and we got fruit for dessert with almost every meal, and their fruit there is very good, very fresh, so it was really cool. Um, we also had to be careful with the water every time, because very different there, so you need to make sure you're having bottled water, so it's safe.
We were, from the time we got there, we basically just covered up the sinks in our hotel rooms to make sure we didn't, we weren't exposed to their water. Um, we were brushing our teeth with water bo, with bottled water, everything like that. Um, we ate a lot of, um, different foods. I'm not a picky eater at all, so I just tried to have as much new stuff as I could, except for bugs, that they eat bugs, um, I didn't try those. Um, but besides that, I just tried as much new stuff as I could. Um, a lot of rice and noodles though, there was always stuff that we could eat. Um, we had a couple vegetarians on the trip with us, and Jing still found stuff for them to be able to eat. Um, but I don't think I can eat rice or noodles for a couple months, probably.
We had the chance to go to a few different temples, and I wasn't expecting to find them as interesting as I did. I have to say, the temples were probably my personal favorite part of the whole trip. I just found them so calming, and we got to walk around, explore, and I even still have bracelets on that were blessed by the monks there, which was incredible, I was not expecting to be as interested in those as I was. That was, I love the temples.
Yeah, we also got to go to some temple ruins by the end of the trip, and, um, we got to have the option of renting out some traditional Thai clothing and trying it on ourselves, and we got to walk around in it, and it was really cool to experience that part of their culture. Uh, we learned a lot about Buddhism while we were there, because that's their religion. Um, and we did a monk chat, so we, um, talked to a monk for about two hours, and some of his college students that were from other parts of the world too, some of them were from China, and they flew there to live there and, um, learn from him to become monks. So that was really cool to just learn all about that, and something totally different than my religion.
When we got back to Bangkok, we went on a river boat ride. So the boats were pretty small, we split up into four groups, and we were floating basically through people's backyards, we saw a bunch of people. Um, we also got to go by some like small markets, I would say.
Yeah, we stopped at, um, a lilac farm too, which was really pretty. It, um, I've just haven't seen anything like that at home. All right, and then for me, um, what I tr, or what we tried to include here is like some of the most memorable, memorable parts. There's really too much that we did to include all of it, but those were just some of my personal highlights. Um, I learned how to like go out of my comfort zone, it made me realize that I want to travel in college, and it showed me like really how independent I could be. Um, I made friends like Liv, I've never talked to her since, I've never known her, and now I feel like we're just gonna be friends for a while, just from bonding over that trip. Um, yeah, so that was great for me to make some new friends outside my comfort zone.
Um, I was also really nervous going, but at the end of the trip, I was so happy that I went, because I made a ton of new friends, ton of new experiences, and I loved learning about just their culture, and how there are certain ways you have to dress at the temples, so I just feel like I got a lot out of it that I'll always remember.
I think trips like this should definitely be taken more advantage of. Like, my friends when I was getting back, they're like, oh, I wish I went, I wish I did it, and I tried to get them to go, but it, it's just like something that I'm so glad I did, and I think more people should definitely try and take trips like this in the future.
And seeing how little the kids there had makes me even more grateful for what I have when I come back here. So it's an amazing experience that I think everyone should consider.
That's everything.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Nancy?
I don't know where to begin.
Yeah, so amazing.
But thank you for coming and sharing all your ideas with us. I, let me ask, the personal growth part, I think is awesome. And did you think your group did anything special to like support each other? Or did that happen kinda naturally, or? Because it, what's good about you being here tonight is it might encourage the next group of kids to come. So, you know, it's good that your group came together as, as a group.
Yeah, I think, um, when we were at the campground at the Educational Center, that really brought us together, because we went from sleeping in hotel rooms with two people a room, to eight, so that was in like bunk beds, that was a huge difference. Um, and we, once we were there, um, we did like icebreaker games, and there were a lot of like underclassmen who went, like there were less juniors and seen, there were a lot of sophomores. And there, I was like thinking of them like, oh, they're my brother's age, like I'm not gonna get along with them, like. But then it ended up like they're, they're fine, and, um, we ended up getting along and being more similar than I thought. So I think those icebreakers definitely helped, and also just being like constantly around each other like made us bond more.
And, um, like you were saying, support, I was very homesick for the first part of the trip, but the teachers picked up on it and were amazing, very supportive, and I made a lot of friends, which just made me feel very comfortable, so I could just really take it all in and enjoy it.
Okay, I have two other questions that are not related to that. The poverty part of it, was like, did you sort of focus on helping people in poverty? Or was there a lot of poverty ev, everywhere in the country?
I mean, everything there is like a lot, everything there is so much cheaper. Like the second you got there, you realized like how much like of a difference it is compared to here, and we couldn't really, it was like a service trip, but we couldn't, there's just so much we could do that we didn't have time to. And I'm, I feel like what we did at the school really like set them up for a good future and got, we just did a lot in those two days, so that, that really helped them, but there's just so much poverty there that we couldn't do enough in the time we were there to like help everybody, I guess. But we did make such a big difference for the school that that was definitely worth it.
Another thing was, on our second day at the school, our tour guide told us if we had any snacks that we weren't planning on eating for the rest of the trip, like ones that we brought from home, or ones that we bought, we just weren't gonna finish, that we could donate them to the kids at the school. So we ended up with a lot of snacks, so a lot of the kids got to take some of those home.
Oh, that's cool. Well, yeah, I think, I think it's just interesting to see like other cultures, and being part of an E, it was an EF tour, right? So you did something that some other group of kids from some other state in the United States or some other country will come and follow up on. So when you think about like all of the people that come, that school will have gotten a lot of help, hopefully, over the course of the year. My other comment is, we're lucky to have teachers that are willing to do these kind of trips.
Yes.
So, you know, make sure you thank them.
Yeah, definitely.
Other comments or questions? Great, thank you so much. Thank you for sharing. Nice job. Okay, the next order of business is a Unified Arts Update.
Yes, Mr. Joe Precini, Unified Arts Department Chair, uh, is present tonight, and he'll be giving a curriculum update. Might not compare to the elephants.
It's gonna be hard to top elephant poopoo paper. Hi, how's everyone doing tonight? I'm, I'm Joe Precini, I, I was here last year, and I told you I'd be back, and I'm back. And this time, I told you I'd talk a little more about STEM Academy, because that's what, last time when I went over the program, it seemed like everyone wanted me to expand on what STEM Academy is. So I thought tonight would be the perfect night to do it. So the mission of STEM Academy is to celebrate, combine, and, um, make a culture where we celebrate and combine science, technology, engineering, and math. Um, and I, I put together a little overview. It's a four-year program at the high school, I wasn't sure if you knew that. Uh, we try to engage the students into the STEM activities and curriculum. All the students take, oh, there it is, science and math, and then they have to take twenty credits in technology or engineering courses as well. Uh, the curriculum, a lot of problem-solving and integrated technologies. There is advanced placement courses, as well as some honor, honors courses available if a student wants to go that route. Uh, we have the AP Computer Principles Programming Class. The, the way the program works is right about now in eighth grade, the eighth graders at both Johnson and Byrd are talking with their eighth-grade technology teacher, and they're being encouraged to apply to this program if it interests them. So usually the student that's interested in this program sort of seeks it out, and so we, we, we identify the students that would really, uh, do well here, and we encourage them to apply. And, uh, so right now they're gonna apply, and I'll go over the process, I'll show you a sample application towards the end. And then once they get to the high school, they're in the program, they have to commit to the twenty credits, and they have to take robotics, and they have to take engineering and design. Uh, but the other credits, they can pick from anything in technology, engineering, and that's a change from the past, where in the past, it was a little more, uh, prescribed what they had to take, but now we give them more flexibility. And then junior year, we added a junior shadowing project, and, uh, we'll talk about that too tonight. And senior has a senior capstone project. And then, um, in addition to that, the student has to commit to one of three clubs, science, Olympiad, robotics, or math team. Okay. A sample schedule would be, I'll go quick on this, it's just they take the science, they take math, and then they pick one of the courses, and then they do their activity. It's sort of like a, a little map for them to follow, so that they know where they're going. And the current enrollment is at forty-six. And usually we get about fifteen to twenty, sometimes thirty at eighth grade, but through the course of the four-year program, we, uh, we allow the students to exit out if, if it's not for them, or it, there's no penalty if they want to leave. But most, most of them stick with it, but sometimes their schedules go in a different direction. Uh, but on average, we're between, fifteen is a good number to have a year. Some years it's a little higher. So on the eighth grade part, I, I included two questions from a last year's STEM students, and I was gonna just go over one of them. So we asked them to describe a personal experience that contributed or helped shape their interest in STEM. And this student wrote, "Ever since I was young, I had an interest in science, but more specifically the technology and engineering aspects of it. I grew up watching my dad write lines of code, and it always interested me. I was fascinated at how he could start with one line of code and be able to create a whole program that could execute instructions." So right there, when you read that, you start at an eighth grade level, when I go through the application, I start realizing, okay, this student really wants to be in the program. And, and then another question we asked is, what do you hope to, what's a goal from the program? And this one wrote, "My goal is to pursue college education in the fields of computer science and engineering. To achieve this goal, I want to join the STEM Academy and develop my skills in programming, problem-solving, and logical thinking in a collaborative setting. I want to participate in STEM activities and projects to help enhance my knowledge in technology and achieve levels of proficiency that would enable me to apply for computer science and engineering programs at good schools." So, so at, I, I, at the eighth grade level, they're really focusing. Now, junior shadowing, uh, is the first major project we send them out to do, and it happens junior year, and they have to commit to going to visit a company or an organization and spend the day shadowing someone. And we've, we hope it's more than four hours, but it has to be at least four hours. And the goal is for them to learn about something in STEM as it's being applied to the real world. Afterwards, they come back, they, they create a slideshow that has a timeline, a little description of what they, what they learned, and all that other stuff. Uh, some places they went, Candela Medical, Boston University Department of Medicine, uh, and, uh, some other places. They, lately what we have noticed is the STEM medical part seems to be more, uh, what, what they're, they're really into that aspect. And in the past, it had been more the robotics technology part, but they really want this, they really seem to like the STEM medical part. Senior capstone, we asked them to solve a problem at the high school or in the community at large. Uh, and how can they use STEM to develop an innovative solution? A lot of the projects they do are what-ifs, or if we could, and I'm sure some of them we couldn't fund, because I don't think you'd fund the hy, hydroelectricity to make the high school more envi, environmentally friendly, but it's a fantastic idea, and it has a lot of potential, but it's a what-if they had an unlimited budget. But some of the ones, they did do that, they did help us design our current schedule using STEM, they had, they had helped us with traffic patterns. One group recommended we could control air pollution a little bit by putting a few more trees in the parking lot. I, I think we might be able to do something like that. And, and currently, one student's working on a better grading portal. In the past, they've, they've suggested some technology scanning stuff, which is, a lot of the stuff is, uh, ideal, perfect, but it, uh, we just like that they're, they're thinking about it. And that's the graphic of the hydroelectricity, uh, design that they're thinking of. So here's a quick little summary sheet for you, uh, basically tells you about eighth grade, that's the application process. Ninth grade, it's we welcome them, we really focus on getting them comfortable at the school, making sure their schedules are correct, and making sure they pick a club. Sophomore year, we had a field trip, we're working on a new one, we used to go to, uh, Olin College. Uh, some, that, that, that one we're rebuilding, and the second year, we're hoping they're more comfortable and doing well in their club. Junior year is the shadowing year, and, and then senior is the capstone year. And then by the end of senior year, they have twenty credits. Now, I thought, better, better than me to hear from you, you'd rather hear from Shannon. Shannon Morris is a current STEM Academy senior, and she volunteered to come tonight. Just give you a little background of how STEM is working for her. Just give you a little background of how STEM is working for her.
Hello. So in eighth grade, I applied to the STEM Academy. And then I didn't know, I learned about it through, I think, someone who was previously in it. And then throughout high school, I took robotics my freshman year and then I'm currently taking engineering design. And those are the two required courses, which I really enjoy. But I was also able to take, I took architecture as one of my requirements, which I found very interesting. And then I was also to take AP Computer Science. So it was an AP course, which also counted towards my credits. I've been in the math club since freshman year or like math team. We go to like different meets, which is not a club I probably would have outwardly joined, but I do enjoy math. So it was a good experience. For junior shadowing, I went to a physical therapist. I'm interested in medicine and in college, I'm doing pre-med. And I would like, I wanted to go to a hospital or a doctor's office, but it was basically the middle of COVID. So I went to a physical therapy place in Sharon. And I worked with her two or three times and I got to meet her patients and kind of learned the process of how she addresses the injury, treats it, and moves forward with it. For my senior capstone project right now, it's more of a theoretical rather than a final physical product. But I'm focusing on how we can use STEM to increase like security in schools due to everything that, like in the world right now and how there can be better security to protect the students.
Great.
Thank you, Shannon. So thanks to Shannon and thanks to all of you for inviting me tonight to come and give an update on STEM Academy. And any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Carrie?
I'm gonna be annoying. I have a lot of questions.
Congratulations, Shannon. Where are you headed to school?
I'm not sure.
I'm sure you're gonna be great with somebody who's gotten a really nice range of experiences and it's awesome. People are kind of shedding that light on this. I'm just curious if there's a cap in terms of the number of students who could participate in the STEM Academy? I know you said it can vary from like 15 to 30, but if you had 50 applicants, could you?
If we had 50 applicants and they filled out the application correctly and they would, they would most likely get in and we'd have 50, 50 people in that year's class. So we would accept anyone who got in.
And I know you said that they find out about it at Parents Night? Is that at the middle schools?
Oh, so in January at the high school, we have eighth grade night for parents. That's the first time we bring it up. The math department chair and the science department chair and I talk about STEM Academy in addition to our programs. And then after that, it's in the program of studies that they take home. But after that, that's when I start reaching out to the middle schools and I ask the principals to put it in the e-notes. And then I go down to the middle school teachers and ask them to put it in their Google Classroom and start, start letting students know.
Okay. Do you ever go down to the middle school to present to the students directly? I know that the Parents Night students are not encouraged to attend, but I think it could be really compelling to have a Shannon or another representative from the high school kind of shed some light on it the way that they hear about, you know, the offerings at the Volk Schools or various things like that.
I have, in the past, gone down. I'm sure I could work on the schedule this year to make sure I get there before they apply at the end of April. So I have gone in the past and I will definitely see if I can get back down.
I would recommend that. I just think there's probably maybe more interest among the student body than you're seeing just by going through the parents to start. You know, it's obviously very compelling to hear from a student who's been through it and all the varied experiences and where she's gonna take it. So I would just put a plug in for that. I'm wondering too if, I know that there's a, like a prescribed sort of curriculum and experiences that happen year to year. But if, let's say there are 15 students in STEM Academy, are there any sort of unifying experiences or community experiences where they're all coming together? Do they feel like they're in a group or are they just sort of on these, on the same track but kind of like siloed? Do you know what I mean?
They're all, they're all in a Google Classroom together. And I have meetings at times by grade. And when we go on the field trip, it's, there's more of a bonding when we spend a day at Olin College. The junior shadowing, I imagine that they work together sometimes and they're in a lot of the same classes. And I mean, the junior shadow and the senior capstone, they do talk to each other about how to do it and stuff like that. Maybe Shannon, do you want to speak of that? How do you communicate with some of the seniors?
There's not many seniors who are still in it. But I do know some of the people and we even ended up being in the same classes. I have talked to them about being part of the program and what they do to their projects.
Yeah, I wonder if that would maybe help with your attention if there were either some cohort activities by grade level or perhaps like mentorship from the 12th graders to the ninth graders or something like that. Because these students obviously have like a shared interest and might benefit from more opportunities to interact like around their participation. And I hope none of this sounds critical. I just think this is an amazing program.
It's great feedback for us.
Ways to like build it up and.
We're still evolving, so we're happy to take any feedback.
Yeah, so I think, I think it's all, I think it's all great. So thank you for answering my questions.
Sure.
Lynn, you might be in trouble after you've got a combined middle school that talks about STEM. Your program might be over flooded by that time.
It might be easier because we're all at once.
Yep. Excellent. Other questions, comments?
Just thanks, Jo. I mean, that, you know, for taking this on. I just think this is like to, what Carrie mentioned. It's a, it's a great program and it gives us, you know, our students some, some wonderful opportunities that, you know, and to maybe make some decisions of where they want to go for a future career path in college. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. All right. The next order of business is the Student Opportunity Act.
Yes. So the Student Opportunity Act was created to ensure that every student in the Commonwealth has access to high-quality public education regardless of their zip code. And ultimately, this act is a recognition that some of our districts in the Commonwealth have been historically underfunded and the goal was to fund them equitably. There's two primary components to the legislation that uses to, that's addressed the equitable outcomes. And one is the fiscal changes to our Chapter 70 funding. And two is the policy updates that sets an expectation that the districts focus on closing gaps for specified targeted groups. The Student Opportunity Plan is also a legislative requirement. And that's to develop a three-year plan to provide annual updates to DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, describing how these allotted funds are being used to support the implementation of our strategies, resources, or programs to close the gaps for these identified subgroups. This year's progress report is largely intended to serve as an update on the implementation of our, of our plans. And it also asks us to update the, how we're using these resources. And this is FY '23. This isn't for next year. This is FY '23. In these highlighted areas. There is a question because, you know, do all districts need to update the plan? Because there are many districts that are receiving like millions of dollars, right? And there are other districts that are receiving little to none. We received $214,000. So the answer is yes. Still need to, to complete it. So if you remember back in 2020, we, school committee voted on the Student Opportunity Act and our, the choice was what we decided to do. Back then it was $100,000. So it was $100,000 more. And again, this is FY '23 in our budgets. So as you're aware from past budget discussions, that the resource allocation continues to support our English language learners. That's, that's the targeted group for the, for this piece. You know, of course, we spend, you know, additional with our, with our budget, but you're saying, how are you using the $214,000? So Walpole Public Schools just as an update, has started to make, you know, some positive gains and strides to meet the needs of our English learners. As noted in our rationale for selecting the, these subgroups, we've experienced a growth in our L population in homes where English is not the first language. So the SOA funds have been allowed us to increase staffing to meet the needs of these students and build positive relationships with our families. Increased staffing has also ensured that we can increase direct support both in and outside the traditional classrooms. Last year, we did, as Dr. Hunt indicated, saw student growth as reflected in our MCAS scores for gap closing. And we also examined results of our vocal surveys that students took. And again, we were pleased that our L students had higher percentages in all four categories, including school climate, safety, engagement, and environment. And so for next steps with the, again, it's FY '23. With the growth of our new ESL staff, as you know, we hired the director and that was Jill Kimball. She gave a pretty, fairly comprehensive presentation at school committee. And she will continue to monitor the progress towards our goal and provide professional development and resources to support and guide not only our ESL staff, but all of our staff and our Sheltered English Immersion, known as SEI. Additionally, the utilization of Elevation, which is a comprehensive English learner program management platform, will help organize our L data, monitor student progress, and support instruction for planning for our students. As you know, in our budget discussions and our budget hearings, we are improving our translation services for family members when attending school-based programs. And in FY '24, we had a slight increase to our budget to reflect the increased needs for these services. And then also in terms of family engagement, we have to update DESI on that as well, that we recognize that family engagement is, we all know that it's critical to a successful learning environment and outcomes for our students. And given this focus on this particular subgroup, it's really important that we find ways to engage our L families. And in collaboration with our L teachers and the L directors, we've continued our PAC meetings, L PAC meetings, to provide information, to set goals, and to really build relationships, have a time for building these relationships. The district has held several family evenings for, for our L families, including multicultural evening at the end of the school, our school year to celebrate. And also the addition of our ESL teacher at the high school level enables the district to increase assistance for both students and families in college and career planning, which is important. So that is the update that will be submitted by April 2nd.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions?
Are the nights that you mentioned well attended?
Yeah, do you want to mention the one at the, the end of the year?
Yeah, the end of the year, Family Night, Multicultural at the end of the year was very well attended. I think a couple of folks from here were, yeah. A great turnout and we anticipate the same will announce it. It's coming at the end of May, so a little early now, but May 24th. This year, we actually are gonna, last year, we deliberately hosted at Byrd so people could start to be engaged in the fact there was a new middle school. And this year, we're gonna host it at the high school, a little bit better space, a little more open and more parking available for all parents and families. And that's actually where, I should add, that we're, our Multicultural Alliance Club at the high school is also gonna co-host it. So we're broadening this scope and engaging more students to help prepare and host the evening.
Awesome.
Which is new.
That's great. All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Ross. The next order of new business is a first reading of several policies.
Several. A lot of them are focused on budget. So these are our first readings. So I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Frisher to just give highlights. So then if you have questions, you know, after your first reading, don't hesitate to reach out. And I know we have people on the Policy Subcommittee here tonight as well.
So there are policies that are geared towards finance and closed near packets. We had a meeting with our Subcommittee to talk about these recommendations. This is based on MASC recommendations for policies having to do obviously with finance. So the first one is a Budget Transfer Authority is what it's titled. And I think the gist of this policy is that when a business office, business administrator authorizes transfers of funding between, they refer to as cost centers within our own budget, that the reporting of those transfers should be given to the school committee periodically. It's a recommendation. We had a discussion about it and thought that each month would make sense. And so I fully support this as transparency to the school committee as far as the operations in the business office and transfers in particular and movements, again, within the school's budget. And this better defines the reporting of those transactions. Okay, the second policy, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting, simply reinforces the fact that we use uniform Massachusetts accounting system to track our funding. We currently use, as a town of Walpole as a whole, uses Munis, which is our financial system. Highly accepted, very common within Massachusetts and the country as a whole. And we follow the Charter of Accounts that are set up by DESI, which dictate how you do your accounting as well as how you do your reporting. And that flows all into the end-of-year report, which we file with DESI at the end of the year, where it is scrutinized by their auditors and then it's scrutinized by our auditors. And the data that that reporting provides is kept on DESI's website and is available to the public for anyone who's interested in learning about financials of every town within Massachusetts. So it's important that we're uniform in that process. This policy supports that. Then purchasing. Again, this one, I think, better defines the importance of responsible procurement. When we purchase through the business office, through the schools, whoever's doing the purchasing at that time, purchase orders are used, they're submitted to the business office for review. They're submitted to the town accountant before being sent out and invoice is being paid or even encumbrances being allowed. Goes through a pretty consistent process. There's a warrant process where those requests for payments are processed through that and approved by the Board of Selectmen as well as the school committee. And any questions that come up are answered. So this is just really reinforcing responsible, uses fairness, integrity when you are doing procurement, giving every vendor a fair chance, not being biased in any way. And really being responsible for finding the best purchasing opportunities for the town is a responsibility of the business office and the people doing the procurement. So that is that policy, purchasing. And then we have the meal charge policy. So as most people know at this point, meals for the last few years as well as this year, it was extended by the legislature and the governor to offer free meals again. Once again, even though the federal government has or will only recognize the free and reduced population, the state has stepped in and said, we'll recognize the rest of the population. So basically, meals are free and available to all students. That would include breakfast and lunch. In this case, prior to that, when we were charging for meals, we had a meal charge policy that had some things that we thought we could do better with. And when we reviewed that policy, I think the Policy Subcommittee had some excellent suggestions about how we could improve it. So once again, we took MASC's recommendations, adopted their policy because it was superior to what we had. We removed one thing about carryover balances, but other than that, it is wholly what MASC recommended. I think it does a really fine job of reining that in. Obviously, right now it is irrelevant and maybe in the future it will be irrelevant because we won't be charging. They won't need a meal charge policy. But if we go back to charging, we have a robust policy in place. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has about policies.
Bill?
Your ma'am chair, I know everybody is very excited by Chapter 30B in the public procurement law. Thank you for this. Just, just a couple of quick clarifications. Obviously, we use standard practices going forward. We always have. And it just seems like we're further clarifying. A lot of times our policy books are fairly old and especially some of these smaller pieces don't move as quickly as the Commonwealth's practices. Who are the certified public procurement? I know you are. Is there anybody else in your office who's MCPPL certified?
Not in my office. Not in my office.
Probably downstairs, there's a couple people.
Patrick, Assistant Town Administrator, and I believe Town Administrator as well.
And could you just clarify? It was interesting to me, and I deal a lot with this in my day job, when you talk about, I think it's a good thing that we get reports where, for the transfer, we would call it, like, in other public financing, they would call it budget codes or things like that. But how strenuous is this? Is this standard now? Is this something where you're going to be coming to us with, like, 50 a month? Or is it? Like, I guess my question is, how large are the sort of center areas you're talking about? Are you talking about from, like, from personnel to?
Goods and services.
Goods and services? Or are you going deeper into the budget, into sort of subareas? I'm just trying to think.
So I would go deeper. I would literally give you the transfer from which account to which account or accounts, vice versa. So it could be goods and services to personnel, it could be personnel to goods and services. A lot of times, it's a school looking at their priorities, purchasing from accounts that are set in the budget, and realizing that I need a little bit more money to fund something within my budget. So I'm going to take it from one pot of money and put it towards the other and make that procurement. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to do it. If you froze everything, they'd be limited by simply what's in each line item, whereas now, they, what we call bottom-line budget, you have the availability of the entirety of your budget. So that's, but that's something that, when you set a budget, that's obviously, school committee has dictated that, you'd want to let you, the school committee, know that we've gone outside of what the original design was.
And just thinking about that, and supposing how reverting this conversation's going to be every month, perhaps, you can think about, as you create that report, doing something fairly streamlined, that maybe just says, like, a purpose column, so that, as opposed to you presenting 50 or 70 transfers a month, you know, between budget codes, it's kind of a, I know that most of them are mundane, but it might just be good for us to have it in the packet and not have to really beat it to death every month. But I'm just thinking, I know, we do that, and that kind of commission is, they do budget transfers all the time, and it's, it can get tedious and long, so.
I would, just to clarify, we do, usually every day, we're doing some type of transfer back and forth. So there will be numerous ones per month, let's say 30, 40 transfers on that list. I would list them, and I would put a description of why. I would assume that in most cases, that would probably answer your questions.
Oh, yeah. If we can keep it now, it'll be good.
Yep, absolutely.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Policy committee?
Super fun.
Excellent.
I do like working with Mike, though.
Sense of malaise going over this group. It makes me a little nervous.
It's even more fun the second time around.
Yes, I feel so well-versed.
Excellent. All right. All right. Well, thanks, Mike, because I have a superintendent request.
You know, wake us right up.
Gosh, it's a lot since, a lot of events since we last met. So during that first full week of March, it was really great to see the turnout to support our student athletes during all the MIA tournament games. I think it was, like, marathon, entire marathon week, but it was exciting. Tournament action with boys' basketball, girls' basketball, and our boys' hockey. So really great spirit, and I appreciate, you know, all the fans turning out to support our students. On March 9th, I attended the Special Olympics, Middle School Unified Basketball Invitational at Boston College. Unbelievable examples of sportsmanship, like, just really a joy to see. And I do want to thank the staff for their extra time and commitment to our students. I'd like to try to see if we can get them in at some point, and recognize them. It was a great afternoon. An interesting Monday evening on the 13th. The weather made it interesting once again, but we averted a snow day, thanks to Dr. Hunt for his help. I think we all heard his voice.
Talk about exciting.
About physical activities. It was interesting. It was Tuesday or Wednesday, yesterday, I was in the parking lot of the high school in the afternoon, and I was talking to some students who finished their track meet, and they were seniors, and they, you know, came up to me and said, "Dr. Hunt, what is up with these snow days? There's no snow days." And I said, "Yeah, well, you know, try it, try it. I thought maybe that week would be the week for you," but it wasn't. And, you know, I was chided a little bit there. And then another student drove up in his car and rolled down his window, and I waved, and he said, "What's up with the snow, no, snow days?" So we all had a good laugh. And I said, "Well, just focus, you know, you're almost done, and we'll be getting out soon." So, so sorry, seniors, but, yeah, like I said, your graduation is on the horizon. This week consisted of attending two wonderful drama productions, Johnson Middle School Play, I think it's Murder on the 518, so Train, really good, and the Byrd Middle School Musical, Mary Poppins. Last evening was the Walpole High School Band, Jazz Band, Orchestra, and Chorus, and that was their spring music concert. So just thanks to all the students and the staff for their hard work in treating us to these outstanding performances. I always say the arts are alive and well at Walpole Public School. The MICA Festival is next Friday. It's really a state festival that has the concert band, the orchestras, the chorus. And so what's interesting is our chorus performs at Norwood High School at 3:40 next Friday. Our band and orchestra are Foxborough High School at 5:00 and 7:00. It's really nice. It's $10. It gets you into both high schools, so you just have to, like, rush from Norwood to Foxborough to see everybody. And a reminder, Pops Night, I found out yesterday at the concert, is Friday, May 19th at 6:30. So I know, I believe we got a table, yeah, last year, and I know a couple of you were at the table, but you ended up working it, right? Which was, which was great, but.
Staff vendors extraordinaire.
So if we're going to get one, we got to get one early. And get those. So that's all on the website. Yesterday, all students in grades nine and 11 were required to stay for intervention block to finalize and submit their course requests. All students will meet with their school counselors to review and confirm their course requests for next year. There's also a great link on the Walpole High School Counseling webpage. The website contains informational videos and other important documents. So a couple congratulations are in order. The robotics, and I didn't realize they're celebrating their 20th anniversary, Mary was telling me. They had their second, they had their competition last weekend at North Reading Memorial High School. They placed third at the North Shore Tournament, and they qualified for the New England Championships, and that's in Springfield, and that's the beginning of April. So we'll get more information about that. We had a minute, there was a middle school tenacity challenge, if you don't know what that is. That's an annual academic competition for teams of Latino, Latina, and African-American students from urban and suburban middle schools across Massachusetts. So that took place last weekend in Bedford, I believe. And the Walpole Middle School team, they're known as the Byrd Johnson Challengers, and they participated in four challenge events. They placed first in the STEM Challenge, and led by advisor and middle school transition coach Courtney Sanders, their victory marks its, their first appearance. So, well done by them. So congratulations to those who participated in the challenges throughout the day. Couple of other upcoming events. The Walpole High School Tech Department is preparing an overhaul for our online communication system with a move to a product called Thrillshare, and it's by Aptige. I don't know if you're familiar with that, Sean. Thrillshare is an integrated system of website, smartphone app, automated and push notifications, and social media connectivity. This transition is going to occur, you know, in the spring, so, I mean, for the end of the school year, that's our plan. Will include a new, modern, mobile-friendly website that showcases the excellent and creative teaching and learning in Walpole. Additionally, the phone app and communication systems are designed to make any sharing of information between schools and families, including automatic language translation when needed. The system will allow us to reach families where they are, on their phones, on social media feeds, rather than solely relying on email. So more information to follow, but Tom Reeve, our Director of Digital Learning, just announced that. Leadership will get training in that once it's, once it's rolled out. Our L PAC meeting is scheduled for March 29th. We invite our families to attend L PAC to discuss opportunities for the educational success of our students. And this also includes formerly, our former English learner education as well. And it's also a time to just network with other families as we build on our collaborative partnership. Again, March 29th, 6 to 7, in the High School Media Center. As you know, the district held two live webinar sessions. Remember, they're focused on elementary and middle school students for online safety. Those sessions are now open on the website. Mary, I'll include that in the minutes, and I'll post that out, too. So if they missed it, they can watch the recording. The high school is next, and that is scheduled, that webinar is scheduled for Monday, April 3rd at 7:00 PM. And there was a push-out that, so parents at the high school can register to, if they like to attend. And again, that will be recorded. A plug for Vacation Camp Extended Day Program is excited to offer an April Vacation Camp for the upcoming school break. And the camp is open to all Walpole School students in grades K to 5. There's a registration link that was sent out, and we'll send that out again. They had, Devin said that the February camp was the highest number he's seen since it started in Walpole, and they had over 60 students each day. So that was great. And finally, just to remember, Art in Bloom this weekend, March 25th from 10 to 5, and March 26th, 2 to 5. We have student artwork from Walpole and Norwood High students, and they'll be displayed at the Moral Memorial Library in Norwood, and admission is free, and we know how talented our art students are, so it should be a good show. And that is it. Excellent. Thank you. Questions or comments? Sean?
Communication news is amazing. I'm so excited. It's great. Thank you for empowering Tom to do that. I know Aptige, I don't know the Thrillshare platform, but I like Tom, I trust his decisions. So I'm sure it's going to be great. But the unified thing is so good.
It's great. I've talked to superintendents in some other districts that use it, and they said it was very well-received.
It's good.
So great.
It's amazing.
And he's using, he's using our photography club students to take pictures to, for the website.
Great.
So he's incorporating, again, student.
Look at this. This is great synergy. I love it.
Yeah. It's nice. All right. Old business. Middle school building project.
So the foundations should be done by the end of this month, and by the middle or second half of next month, you'll start to see some steel going up.
Cool.
So you'll start to see a building take shape. It's still under budget, so that's where we are.
Cool. Yes, Bill?
I just happened to be at Country Kitchen one day, and one of the neighbors who's involved in construction was asking, "Do we have any, or the capacity, do something like a construction cam, or is there something like?"
There is one.
Is there one? Is there, like, a link to that? Because he was, this older retired person was like, "I keep kind of driving by to see it, I'm really excited about it, and I'd love to be able to, like, give him a link or something, or if we have a slideshow at the end." It just seems like a really cool thing we could, like, center in the process.
And there was a great drawn picture of, you could see it, so I'll, that's on the middle school building website, and I'll post that as well, but, yeah.
Thank you, that's good.
Excellent. High school project. Sean?
Yeah, we've got an awesome opportunity to hear from Chris from Tapehead with some of his progress in the drawings that he's been working with on Monday, 4 o'clock, High School Media Center, I think, is the location. So I don't know that we're going to get stuff well ahead, because they're still in process on a lot of it. We're not going to get the exact final designs, but he has some drawings available that really show kind of what the high school looks like now, but what it might look like in the future. So I think it's a great time for us to ask a lot of critical questions, provide feedback, and inform the rest of their process.
I think we'll get a wall update, too, right?
Oh, yes. The high school wall. Brick wall, as you walk up, if you're unfamiliar with the high school wall.
Good. Subcommittee activity. You know, we talked about policy. Anything else?
Can we just talk about legislative stuff?
Absolutely.
Because we've been active legislatively, and, you know, we always, we always try to be, but I think this year's been really good. Almost all of us attended the February 8th meeting here locally in Walpole, which was great because we got great representation from our state reps. And then Bridget Kristen and I went to another one with people from many other school districts at the beginning of March. It was people from Worcester County, Middlesex County, and Norfolk County. And I brought the handouts that we got, for those of you that weren't there, because all of the districts, this is for Bill, I didn't make that many because it was color. All of the districts that are there are pretty much advocating for the same thing that we were advocating for in February, which is help with the special education costs. And essentially, what they're saying here is, if we can get what they're calling pothole money, it would be helpful to the districts for FY24. So that's why that's the top priority. If we change the circuit breaker funding mechanism, that wouldn't help us until FY25. So the event in March was good because it really streamlined the efforts, but it also validated the things that we had asked for when we were with our local reps. So, you know, across, across the state, there's a lot of advocacy, advocacy going on around the fact that K to 12 education is in a, in a tipping point at this point, I would call it, because the federal funding that has kept us alive over the last few years is gone. And if the state can't help out, then districts are in trouble. We happen to be in good shape because when, when the governor's numbers came out, ours looked favorable. But we're almost always in this boat. So if we're not advocating for ourselves for this year, we still need to be part of the team that's advocating for the fact that there are a lot of other districts that are in, in rough shape. And these, these are the, the main points, the 1 through 4 on the right-hand side. And the Mass Association of School Superintendents did a really good job, like, honing in on, on the main points. They said they were going to get us the slideshow. I'll, I'll follow up on that and send it to you guys, because, you know, it just helps with talking points. But we are, if it's okay with this board, I'm just going to send a follow-up note to our reps, sort of re-emphasizing these points. And the, we're in the process right now where the governor's numbers have come out. The next step is the House budget will come out, then the Senate budget will come out, then the House and the Senate have to agree, and sometimes the governor makes overrides. It's a little bit hard to predict how it's going to go this year, but the fact that our numbers look good is very encouraging, because I've never seen it where the, where a city or town gets less than what the governor puts out. Usually, the House and the Senate make some tweaks to, to help their districts, essentially, but it, I've never seen it go backwards. So we're in pretty good shape at this point. And I think the communication is good. We just need to keep it there, because who knows what happens next.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. Any other comments, questions?
Do you guys have a quick citizens comment if we're done with the subcommittees?
Sure.
I think the majority of us maybe have received a plea for help from the Walpole Friends of Music, which, once again, the scrappy, small group of parent volunteers has aged out, and they are, once again, looking at possibly folding. So they are seeking volunteers from members of the Walpole Public School community to take the write-ins. I think they need to completely. I think they need a completely new board, so if we could perhaps attach their letter to our, our minutes for this evening, and I think the, all the principals are going to send it out as well, but they do a lot of good stuff, very quietly, but they reached out to a few of us here, so it's, it's that kind of time in the cycle again, unfortunately.
Thank you, Bill. All right, Sean, do you want to take the warrants?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following expense warrants for the amounts listed in your packet. Those warrants are 223035, 223036, and 223037.
Second.
A motion by Sean, second by Mark, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the following payroll warrants for the amounts listed in your packet. Those are 2233PA and 2235PA.
Second.
A motion by Sean, second by Mark, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, passes 600. Somebody like to take the gift?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the following gift to Fisher School from Baystate Textiles Recycling in the amount of $125.
Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Mark, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600. Would you like to take the minutes?
Your ma'am chair, make a motion to approve the March 2nd, 2023, school committee meeting minutes, and the March 16th, 2023, policy subcommittee meeting minutes.
Second.
A motion by Bill, second by Mark, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, motion passes 600.
Your ma'am chair, make a motion to approve the March 2nd, 2023, school committee executive session meeting minutes, with the understanding that those meeting minutes will not be disclosed until the matter is resolved.
Second.
A motion by Bill, second by Mark, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
Oh.
Daydreaming here. Motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion by Mark, second by Carrie, all those in favor, 600. Thank you so much. Have a good night.